In your role, looking at the way that things are running, you know, teachers, recruitment, staff, you talked about transportation. So what is the situation for Greenbelt schools? Do we have enough teachers? Do we have enough substitutes?
I think the teacher shortage crisis is gonna continue to be an issue. This is a national issue. This is not just a Maryland issue. And I think it is both attracting people to the profession. I think it continues to be about ensuring that we are, you know, paying our teachers what they're worth to keep them in the classroom. And then I think it's, you know, it also goes to things like creating opportunities for professional development, for leadership opportunities, that really allows them to know that they can grow in those roles and that they want to stay in the classroom. And so Greenbelt and District Two and Prince George's County Schools is still faced with the teacher shortage. The specific numbers of how many teachers were short, I'm not 100% certain, but what I can say is that I know that where we are most in need is in our STEM program. So this is science, technology, engineering, mathematics, as well as our special education and any language needs that may exist. So, you know, having bilingual teachers is also an area where there is significant need and it's just hard to find those people across the nation.
So in the short term, the administration is still trying to recruit temporary teachers and substitute teachers? So if there are individuals in Greenbelt or the surrounding areas that are looking to become educators, there's opportunities and sort of pathway to move forward?
Yes, there are, there continues to be our, the PGCPS HR department continues to lead hiring fairs, looking for new and emerging teachers. There are non-traditional pathway programs, certification programs, provisional certification programs for teachers. And then, of course, there are some initiatives to find, you know, and recruit back retired teachers, educators that have been in the profession for years and may want to come back into the school system. So I know that the HR department has lots of steps that they're in interventions that they're leading to really address and mitigate this challenge. But, you know, obviously, there's only so much. And I think part of this is also creating a pipeline of new teachers, students who are going into the profession. And so it is gonna take, I think, in addition to policymakers like yourself and the council, you know, gonna take a number of different tools and strategies to attract people into the field. And that will be, you know, thinking about our next generation of educators, our students that are in PGCPS schools and ways that we can encourage and create those pathway programs. So there is more than needs to happen at the state and at the local level, including with institutions of higher education to really support a number of different strategies.
Staying on that topic of recruitment and staffing and whatnot, I know there was a big shortage of school bus drivers and crossing guards, but just administratively, is, are there challenges with having enough people working in the schools with the teachers and supporting students?
That's a great question. I don't know that I could answer that knowledge. It sounds like you're, you might be referring to paraprofessionals or substitute teachers, as you mentioned. And I can't say that I know for certain that there are challenges there. I would imagine there are, but I would prefer to get back to you in a written statement on what exactly is happening with paraprofessional substitute teachers and other, perhaps, part-time educators in schools.
Okay, okay. What seems like there are more crossing guards this year, from what I've heard, perhaps the Prince George's County Police Department has a responsibility for recruiting and bringing those individuals in. The situation, I haven't heard too many problems so far. What are you hearing?
Yes, I know that, and that really is largely with the Prince George's County Police Department that led some of the hiring initiatives. I also know that the county executive's office was leading some initiatives in partnership with PGCPS schools and recruitment efforts for crossing guards. I think we talked about this before, in which the challenge is that it's such a unique group because they're not working for like eight hours a day, right? They may be working for two hours here in the morning and then perhaps again, two hours in the afternoon when school's released. And so finding people who both fit that category and then also making sure that the pay is there. There have been initiatives from the county executive's office, as well as in partnership with the police department and PGCPS schools to really support with crossing guards. And I think that, that, I don't, I don't wanna naively say that that issue has been addressed. I know that we had our challenges last year with two students that lost their lives at Riverdale Elementary School. And so because of that, I think that there's likely still gonna be challenges and that probably isn't at capacity in ensuring that we have enough crossing guards. But I do know that with schools, there are teachers who go out into the streets in the mornings, you know, to support with safe passage efforts as students are walking to schools in the morning. So there are other strategies that are happening within the school building to ensure that there's someone that has eyes on students as they're commuting to school. I just think that we have to continue to support our schools with having the bodies, I think really is, it may not necessarily be money and it could also be volunteers and other one-off programs. And I think that there's still a need that exists there.
Yeah, I think one of the issues was the crossing guards were being asked to move from, instead of just being based in one school and one community, they were being asked to be one place in the morning and someplace else in the afternoon. And that was hard for some of the people who wanted to serve as crossing guards. So hopefully, that's changed or that's something that is being given consideration.
Yeah, I can definitely follow up on, you know, any strategies that are addressing that specific issue.
I'm gonna ask one more question, kind of circling back to transportation. Then I'm gonna open it up. So we're talking about the school bus drivers and there just aren't enough school bus drivers. So my understanding is that there's a different app that's being used this year so that our, our students and parents can actually see when, when and if a bus is coming. You know, it's, it's been a real challenge. And so can you talk about that a little bit? What are you hearing about the, the transportation challenges? Are they better this year or is it just an ongoing problem?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. I will say that I've heard, and I believe that the school district is still using the Stop Finder app. I think they just made updates to the Stop Finder app to make it more efficient. I've heard anecdotally that there have been challenges with tracking buses or that parents may get pinged that says that the bus is in a specific area, but then it's not there, or buses arriving later than what they were scheduled to arrive at or what the, what the app says. So I think there's still some, some technical issues that exist there that need to be ironed out. I think also that, you know, definitely, I know there's gonna be a bit more detail about the transportation piece, but I definitely think there's a lot that has happened to consolidate routes and to ensure that buses are getting more students filling the seats as opposed to having a number of different drivers and buses that aren't filled that has been improved since last year. And so I think overall, transportation is, has made improvements. And, and there are areas where they are really shining. I think there are other areas, such as the app and just timeliness of buses on certain routes, or I think inefficiencies that might exist with certain routes. There are some that I've heard, so I can't say for certain, you know, obviously from a research stance, but what I've heard is that some of the routes seem to kind of dart one way and then dart the other way and they don't seem to make a lot of sense or seem to be the most efficient. And so there may be some areas that could be addressed there, as well as, I think, updating stops that aren't inconvenient for parents and that makes sense for student safety. So there are still things that need to be addressed, but there have been some improvements that I'm happy to go into more detail about as well. Concerning transportation.
Hey, two more quick questions about staffing. So the library, school library, media rooms, is there a full-time person that is charged with running the media center? Or are there librarians in all of our schools?
Oh, that's a great question. That's one that I don't think has come up in a school board, any school board hearings or meetings. And I think that is an interesting question that I can follow up on. Do, are you like wanting to know just in general if there is like a librarian shortage or are you curious about a particular school?
Well, I had been talking to some folks in general and, you know, people associate, you know, libraries with learning and education and certainly access to information, be it digital or books or packets, very, very important. It's my understanding that, that they are not school, library, media specialists necessarily in every school. So it's, it's a bit of a concern. So asking about that. And also with nurses, do we have nurses in each of the elementary schools and middle schools and at the high school?
So I don't want to be quoted here. I believe that we were, I believe that we were adequately staffed with nurses in each of our schools, but I will have to follow up on that one as well. It hasn't come up yet and I think I'm really referring back to last year, that that's the news that we got from our HR team. So I'll have to follow up nurses as well.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Poppy?
Yes, there was a safe passage program that was piloted in South County later last year. And I was just wondering if there are any plans to roll that out a little more widely? Because we could, I think that program would be really effective here. We really, we really do see issues with, we have so many walkers here. We do see issues with kids walking home from Roosevelt and kids walking home from Greenmail Elementary School that having, and we do have some programs that we do, we do cookies on the bridge for these kids, you know, just so that they see an adult when they're coming home. But having actual training for these volunteers and having something more formal would be really great.
Yeah, I do, I do agree. And I know that there is, there's actually, the, the, the school system adopted a safe passage initiative. So it's kind of going just beyond a South County thing and it is kind of a school-wide thing. How that's being rolled out in each of the communities, I prefer to follow, follow up with you on it because I don't want to misspeak about it. But I do know that there is a safe passage program that is in existence in, in PGCPS that's beyond just the South County.
That'd be great if you could just follow up and let us know when we can expect to see that up in Greenbelt.
So, yes, Councilmember McKinnney?
Yeah, one of the things that, as you may know, that we do well here in Greenbelt is that we provide just a lot of great recreational resources and activities for the kids. But with that and with the huge amount of demand, there's also somewhat limited facilities that we have to accommodate that. And so one of the things that we've been trying to determine is if there could be a way to share some of the facilities, especially in Greenbelt West. So we know that in, over at Greenbelt Middle School, for example, they have fields that have lights on them that we, it would be great to be able to think about a way to partner together to share some of those fields and whatnot. I'm wondering if that has come up and who we might be able to discuss further partnership to be able to utilize those facilities in those fields.
Yes, so this has come up a number of times. I believe I spoke to the mayor pro tem about this and I also spoke with the principal at Greenbelt Middle School, who is more than happy to share the field. He did mention that there are some nuances there because I believe right now, the field that's behind Greenbelt Middle School is also at times utilized by Dora Kennedy. So there's pieces around there, but I believe what you all are asking is outside of school hours, being able to kind of, you know, as you mentioned, utilize the recreational space or utilize the fields on a Saturday. And so there are some coordination pieces that would need to go through the building services team who would best be able to support next steps there. And I do think I put someone in contact from your office with the building services team, but I'm happy to do that again this, this year to kind of advance. And then, and I believe these are discussions that have been happening for some years now. So I would hope that we can get a resolution to this because I can imagine it's frustrating if you continue to ask and then it, for, for some reason, is not moving forward. So I can put as a next step for myself to follow up with the building services team with someone from your office about having discussions about the Greenbelt Middle School space and perhaps other spaces in Greenbelt.
Yeah, I think that would be great because there's been, I think, if I'm not mistaken, from our recreation department, an MOU established and things like that. So it seems to be a spinning conversation. So if you can assist in helping to move that forward this year so that we can have some fields, especially as we get back into the spring and things like that, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I think it was an MOU was almost established. Like it got very close and then never finally got implemented.
We have a final MOU that just didn't get signed and that's dated August 7th, 2019.
You've been working on that for years.
Prior to that, too.
If I could just add, what would be, you know, it would be great if we could just move this specific project along, but it would also be great if the board could work on a specific policy around this because I'm sure we're not the only community that would like to access the school recreation fields. And if there was a, a policy in place, you know, there would be sort of a, people would have a guide on how to actually go about doing this. And maybe it wouldn't take five years for it to happen.
I think it would be good to hear from, I'm sorry to jump in, but it'd be good if we can get a, someone with the authority to execute the MOU so that we're speaking directly with that individual. Here on our end, this is, whatever MOU we propose, council approves, these are the individuals that need to be involved.
And, and that would be building services. So building services is gonna, they're gonna be the individuals that are going to work. And of course, that would likely be also our legal office of general counsel that would work with kind of developing the MOU, make sure that the legal language is right. But it would be a partnership between building services and OGC. I will say that to your question around a policy. So I think that, that can be, that, that could be a solution and it can be tricky because I think, as you all know, being in a policymaker role is that there could be layers to it that aren't just explicitly PGCPS, but it could be other kind of county pieces that are, that are in there too. So I think what I could do is I could see, and, and we do have a policy agenda and we have a set of policies that we prioritize for the year. So we actually did get that, that, that agenda approved by the board in one of our recent board meetings. But I'm happy to, one, you know, explore that policy and see what it says and then see if we can get it onto the agenda, if it is something that would actually address this particular issue. But if it isn't, then I think it's just a matter of applying pressure to get this to move forward so that there, there isn't kind of an endless back and forth discussion that isn't really gaining any traction.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts?
Thank you. What, what is the existing policy on that, on outside groups using the school property? I'm sure there's a policy already in place.
Yeah, yeah, there's likely a policy. I'd have to, you know, we have, we have a number of policies. So hundreds.
Could you make that available to us?
Yeah, absolutely. I can follow up with that policy.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember?
Just one more follow-up to that. And if it is on your policy agenda, can you also let us know when it may be on an agenda for a board meeting? So that if we can be present to also advocate for that, we, I'm, I'm sure there will probably be several council members and community members that would love to be able to do that.
Yeah, I want to be clear. So it's actually not on our policy agenda for this year. As I mentioned, we approved our policy agenda, but it didn't, I don't believe we had that as one. But as I mentioned, we do, you know, explore different policies for the preceding school years and that's something that we can look into is one, pulling this and seeing if this would actually address the issue. And then if so, getting it on the agenda for the next school year. And then those will always go through the committee. So I'm happy, I'm the, right now, I'm the policy and governance chair and would be happy to share that information with the Greenbelt City Council when that's up for discussion, a committee for testimony and for input. And then all of our policies always go out for public comment. And so if you have a specific comment versus a testimony that you want to give and say, hey, this specific area seems restrictive or this thing needs to be changed or in section 2A it says this, but it should be saying this. Those are things that you're, you're always welcome to do. And then, of course, you can always reach out to me if you have advocacy that you have on a policy that exists, even if it's not up for discussion. I'm always happy to take that and hold on to it for future discussions that we'll have once that is on an agenda to discuss.
You know, it's always been troubling to me when, when the middle school, Greenbelt Middle School was constructed and the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School. and, uh, the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School, uh, was re- recreated, opened again. There was no additional recreation spaces actually, uh, dedicated, uh, at that time. So both the French Immersion School and the middle school have had to share recreation facilities for that whole time. The populations at those schools, really the middle schools, really exploded. Uh, it's only been seven or eight years since the middle school was opened. And I don't know how many temporaries are there now. There must be about 10 temporaries behind the building. Of course, at Roosevelt, there are close to 25, 25 or 30 temporaries back behind Roosevelt High School. Uh, same with, uh, Spring Hill Lake Elementary School, not, uh, not Greenbelt Elementary School. So what, what's the situation with, uh, the student population and the ratio of teachers to students? You know, it's, what is that ratio now? And what, what are we gonna do about Roosevelt and then all of the temporaries there? It's, when temporaries have been in place for 20 years, they're not so temporary anymore.
The temps, yeah. So I will, I will clarify that I think the temps, um, have been used for multiple purposes. You know, at one point, they were used because there wasn't enough space in schools. I think Spring Hill Lake is a good example of that. And they use a temp space for kind of specialty, um, courses that students walk out. I think there is kind of a, almost a garden area that they walk out into to go to the, the, the temp spaces. Um, and of course, they're gonna have their facility built soon, which will allow for likely, th- there's not a need for the temps. Um, I think with Roosevelt, um, different than a space issue, it's, it's allowing for, uh, different types of programs that, um, that may be, need specific kind of setups, um, that don't necessarily, um, fit for a classroom. And, um, and I do think that, um, there may be a different issue than the Spring Hill Lake with Roosevelt because they have ample space, but they, um, use attempts for a different reason. So I think that, um, if the question is, uh, will that continue to be an issue? Well, one, as far as, 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 uh, capacity in schools goes, our school boundaries really are meant to address that. And as you know, uh, because you all have reached, uh, had a, a number of, uh, of, of constituents reach out about, um, challenges with boundaries. Um, really, that is to mitigate the challenge of an influx of people who have kind of migrated to the northern county, particularly after the pandemic, during the pandemic. Um, and, and that is why we, we in particular, uh, saw a lot of, you know, students moving from one school that was really convenient. It was in their community to another school that didn't seem, um, to necessarily be the best fit, um, in some parents' eyes. And that was to address the, um, the ratio of teachers to, to students. Um, and so I think all of our schools now, because of those, um, kind of consecutive boundary initiatives that we have had, um, are addressing that. And then, of course, our school construction is just another step in that direction, um, to really address those things. So there are state mandates, um, around facility assessments, um, and ensuring that, you know, we have an adequate, um, kind of staff to student ratio. And in any time that that tips too far in one direction or the other, that is where we see a lot of those boundary initiatives come into play uh, to really address that issue. And so, um, I think right now we're at a good space because we aren't releasing any new boundary initiatives. But we do continue to, the school district does continue to monitor and, of course, to manage, um, if there happens to be, uh, again, an influx of students in a particular, um, building or area, um, throughout the county.
So let, let me put a pin in that. So, uh, currently, you know, this year and in the coming years, uh, short term, there are no plans to make modifications to the boundaries. So Greenbelt students will continue to be able to attend schools in Greenbelt or next to Greenbelt, as is the case with Magnolia.
So that's not fixed. It really depends. I think the question actually follows your statement of, you know, what is the ratio? So that's constantly a question that the team that reviews this and that monitors that is thinking. And so there is no guarantee that there won't be another boundary initiative. Um, but of course, there'll always be, uh, because we did get a policy passed, um, this past school year, um, there will always be ample notification, adequate notification, and targeted notification to parents and those affected by those boundary changes so that they have enough time to make an informed decision for themselves. Um, but I, I don't want to give any false, um, hope that, you know, you should be expecting one way or the other. Um, it really is kind of a constantly evolving situation, and it just depends on, uh, what those assessments say um, about the, the ratio of students to teachers.
So i- is there a specific, uh, time of year when, when that's considered? Uh, you know, boundary changes for the next two or three years or out years, are they considered once a year? Or is there a particular meeting or time when, when those discussions happen?
Yeah, and normally, I would say it's normally around October. So it would be, uh, in about a month or so that they would release an information because they'll have hearings for it with the superintendent um, to discuss it, and then, of course, they'll release an information to schools. So normally, the, the window of time is between October and December that both there are, um, discussions with the superintendent, with the board, and then notification is sent out to families by December. And normally by March, there, that's when the rollout happens. So you should be expecting, if there is any initiative that's gonna happen, you'll hear something in the next month, um, between October and, um, December.
Okay, so the administration would report out to the school board. Can you please let us know if any, uh, any changes are being proposed for Greenbelt Schools?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, uh, councilmember Poppy, please.
Um, I just wanted to add some clarity here because I have a student at Roosevelt, and he's been in trailers every single year and never for any kind of specialty program. He was in there for English one year, his regular math class another year, um, social studies, and I think he's got a social studies class out there this year. So it's just regular. They're just out there for their regular classes. Nothing specialty is happening. I mean, maybe, you know, but I think in general, they just don't have enough room for the kids in the building. Um, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that for any folks that might be listening, that they're utilized. I mean, the kids don't mind being in them because in some ways there's more space, um, but, you know, it's. Right, they're outbuildings at this point.
Well, I, I had heard a few years back that there was, uh, some sort of informal discussion or a task force being put together to, to talk about Roosevelt, uh, down the line and the possibility of maybe building, uh, another building on on the grounds there. Is, is that something that, uh, actually happened or is in consideration?
Um, so everything, anything that is going to, as far as construction is concerned, anything that's gonna happen is gonna be in our capital improvement program. I do want to clarify really quickly that, um, my, my retail was after a discussion with the principal. So there likely could be other, uh, programs that are out in, in the trailers, um, English and math. But I do know that there are, um, other types of programs that are in some of the trailers too. So if that is a correction that I need to make, then I'm happy to do that. Um, and then as far as the, um, uh, um, buildings go, and if there's any construction that's gonna happen um, with Roosevelt, that would be in the educational facilities master plan and the assessment that was done in our capital improvement program. So happy to follow up with that. I don't believe that I, at least in the next, uh, in the next two phases, um, saw anything with Roosevelt. But, um, that, that could be true and, um, i- it'd be, it could be still be in my mind. So I'm happy to follow up with that if there's a detail about Roosevelt.
I appreciate that. So, uh, we're gonna pause for a couple of questions from the public. Also, a member of our Advisory Committee on Education, Stephanie Arcido, is here with us. She may have some questions as well. And, uh, after, after a couple of questions, I would like you to, uh, brief us, update us on the status of the, uh, the new building for Spring Hill Lake, uh, Elementary School and how, how that transition will take place with the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School. But there are a couple of questions and, uh, I don't know, uh, Robert, you.
First, could I ask our members of ACE to introduce themselves, please?
Just speaking to.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Arcido, member of the ACE Committee in Greenbelt.
Do we have any other ACE members on, uh, online by any chance?
I don't think so.
Okay. Robert, please.
Robert Goldberg Strassler, 114 Lastner Lane, Greenbelt. Okay, I'm just following up what Mayor, uh, Jordan said about the nurses. How are the, uh, do you have any shortages in professional counselors? Community-wise and locally? And how many are, do you have? Because the, the normal standard for a counselor is one student, one counselor for 300 students. And I don't know if that standard is being adhered to.
Um, so I believe, uh, that we are, we are, we are at a good ratio for, um, school counselors, school social workers, um, school psychologists if necessary, and then for nurses. Um, I, but I, I don't want to be quoted here, um, because I, I do believe that I'm going off of information from last school year, which was that we did not have any, um, any vacancies or issues there. Um, and those were adequately staffed and that our mental health supports and resources were, um, were, were in a good space throughout the county, um, for students. Um, we haven't had a presentation from our H R department on that, um, this year. And so I want to follow up about whether those still remain the same as last year. I would assume that they do, but, um, but things can change in a matter of months. And so, um, I, I'm happy to follow up with you, uh, Mr. Goldberg, about that.
Do you have a full-time counselor at every school in the, uh, in the county?
Yeah, so.
Uh, school sharing. I'm saying a full-time counselor on board.
And when you're referring to counselors, again, you're.
Professional counselors, that's their title.
And saying that I think as far as advocacy goes, that in this, for the sake of transparency, that window of opportunity is likely closed because we have ratified our budget in June based on what the state was giving us and what the county is going to give us. And then, as I mentioned, the deadline is September 30th. And I'm sure you know with the federal government, everything's a ramp up. Really, this is through MSD being the intermediary between the federal government and Prince George's County. So I'm happy to follow up on what exactly you heard and whether that is how that impacts PGTPS and what it is we're missing if we aren't getting a significant amount of dollars from SIR funds.
Thank you. And that 780 million is actually, that is at the state level, just to be clear.
Thank you. That's a lot of funding. Stephanie Orsio.
So what are some ways that Green Belt Advisory Committee ACE on Education can build a partnership with the locals, Greenbelt schools?
Yeah, so I think this question, and Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to assume that this question is really pertaining to our community schools. But are you referring to all, I'm sure you also want to build relationships with all of our schools.
Well, all of our schools are great, but in specific, our Greenbelt schools.
Greenbelt. Okay, I would say, I think it looks different based on the context. If it's a community school, then our community schools have community school coordinators. If it's that you want to support with after-school activities or, you know, supplying students with resources that may be high need. I do think community school coordinators would be a really good starting point, which I'm happy to put you in contact with. If you are looking for, you know, providing after-school programs inside of a specific school, then that would likely be less of a local school and more of a particular office in the administrative office that would handle kind of vendors or partnerships that may exist. And so they would really be the people that I would turn you to if you wanted to do things like offer a specific type of program or intervention in a school building. Because they tend to have, you know, I mean, sometimes they have application processes that exist or they have approved vendors that provide specific services based on specific requirements that could be mandated in law. But it could also just be based on like policies that exist in the county. So it really just depends on what, to what extent you want to engage with schools and what it is you want to do. And then I can figure out who are the right partners to. And then I can figure out who are the right partners to put you in contact with.
Could you get us in contact with the administration?
Yes, absolutely.
That question about community schools, well, so there are three community schools, designated community schools in Greenbelt, the middle school, Spring Hill Lake Elementary School and Greenbelt Elementary School. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how can yeah. Elementary school is a it's actually Magnolia, I think. I don't believe that Greenbelt Elementary School is a designated community school.
Okay.
I I don't think that they are.
It could be Magnolia or I you know, that's a great I know that I know for sure that Spring Hill Lake and Greenbelt Middle School have community coordinator.
I don't think it needs to be a title one school. Is that correct?
Yeah, Green Hill, Greenbelt Elementary School, I'd have to look to confirm that that's the school. But I do think that we have three in Greenbelt, so I'll have to follow up with that. But I do still want to question if you.
Okay. Hey, so I did want to to go ahead and take a deep dive into this this move, the French immersion school moving to the Goddard campus. Has that been finalized and is that move permanent? And if yes, how will the new students be accommodated space wide and culture wide? So the first part is the French immersion school definitely moving from Greenbelt to the Robert Goddard campus.
Yes, so the the answer to that is yes, and that a letter was sent on July 12th to the Dora Kennedy Community communicating that beginning in school year 2627, they will permanently move to and co-locate with the Robert Goddard Montessori School on Good Luck Road. So so your first question, the answer is yes, it is. It is a permanent move and it has been communicated with the with the Dora Kennedy Community.
Okay, and is there enough space there at the Goddard campus? How are you going to accommodate the number of students and working out the logistics? That transition, just in terms of culture, is going to be difficult. There are so many Greenbelt, Berwyn Heights, College Park, parents and students in the area that are accustomed to being able to walk to school. So when is when is this going to happen? And how how is the transition going to be made just in terms of communicating with the parents and the community in general?
Yeah, so well, I just want to for context sake, because I think some people may not know what the process was and that it was a thoughtful process on behalf of PGTPS. But they they did meet multiple times with the Dora Kennedy PTO, with school administrators and with the broader stakeholder community, including parents, concerned parents about the shift. They worked for several months in coordination with the area office, with both principals of Dora Kennedy and Robert Goddard on multiple occasions to better understand any specific community needs. They worked with and conducted site visits with Mr. Spence, the the principal at Dora Kennedy at both Robert Goddard and Kimmore, which was a school they were initially considering for the move. And they also really worked to get buy in from both principals at Dora Kennedy and at Robert Goddard. And then to the space piece, they invested in increasing the capacity at Robert Goddard by planning to expand the existing 10 classroom modular to an 18 classroom modular. And I know that over the next two years, they do plan to have team building activities and events to allow students, staff and parents the time to foster relationships that support with the transition. And I anticipate that this is their kind of culture building piece to really get everyone acclimated, comfortable with the building. And I believe a question may be, you know, in what way can the Greenbelt City Council be a part of that culture building and a part of that kind of initial introduction to the new community? So I'm happy to work with as a follow up with connecting you with the Chief Operating Officer, Dr. Coleman, to coordinate time for an opportunity for the Greenbelt City Council to view the space and to get a tour once that time comes. But as far as when this is happening, this will be happening during the school year 2627 period. And in a coordination with that, Spring Hill Lake is going to be moving into the old Dora Kennedy Building because it really for a number of reasons, but one, because most of the students in Spring Hill Lake are walkers and the temporary location is just very convenient. It minimizes any kind of additional impacts of transportation barriers that may exist, environmental impact, cost of providing for bus transportation, since many of those students already walk. And so they'll be in the building until school year 28, when their new building will be constructed. And then I do know that as far as that building, that building is going to be turned over. It will no longer be in possession of PGTPS after school year 28. So there will not be Dora Kennedy students and families and educators, as we know them, moving back to the Dora Kennedy Building. They'll remain at the Robert Goddard space. And there hasn't been haven't been updates yet from this particular team about what the next steps will be after that two years where Dora Kennedy is at Robert Goddard. So I'm happy to follow up about that once more information comes available in the future.
So we need to get a better understanding of the transition for Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. So this will be happening in the next academic year?
Yeah, so.
To Dora Kennedy, two more years, two more years.
Two more years, yeah, so school year 26, so that would be this is school year 2425, 25 and 26, 2627 would be two years away. So we have lots of time and they're going to be ramping up all of the, as I mentioned, the community building pieces as well as the coordination that is really going to be required, both from transportation as well as other logistics for all of that.
It really doesn't seem like a lot of time at all, particularly when it comes to moving the elementary school students over to Dora Kennedy. The conditions in the middle in Dora Kennedy right now leave much to be desired. So many, many of us are very concerned about the health and safety of the students as they move there. So just in terms of doing upgrades, making sure that the water is safe and that the facilities are adequate, how budgetarily is that something that has been planned for?
Yes, so the reason why the Dora Kennedy Building was selected, and and I want to be clear that, you know, based on the school's kind of aging structure and substantial rebuilding costs, that was really why Dora Kennedy was initially planned for permanent closure at the end of the 2027 school year was because of factors that really come from the Interagency Commission on School Construction. These are called statewide facility assessments that kind of rate schools based on their facility condition index, which kind of is a score that schools get for their facilities or physical condition. And then kind of the depleted percentage of the lifespan of the school building. So is it going to cost more to take care of the building versus letting it go is essentially it. And Dora Kennedy score showed that it really wouldn't be worth it. But they have done through these facility assessments, you know, testing on a number of different factors. And so from the the standards and the thresholds that exist based on state law around what makes a building safe, Dora Kennedy has been deemed for Spring Hill Lake to be safe for those two years. And then I think this is really because of the kind of additional cost of taking care of the building. They're they're going to, of course, permanently close it after Spring Hill Lake transitions for those two years to their new school building. So I think based on the information, I'm happy to get more specifics. If you want to review the report on Dora Kennedy to see, you know, what are all the different indicators say? I can get that information as a follow up for you so that you can see for yourself what the conditions assessment says about that particular building and its its safety requirements.
We would very much like that. And our Advisory Committee on Education would probably like to be able to to take a look at that and review and share some thoughts about what parts of the the building the students would actually go to. And just there's just so many things. Mr. Roberts?
It's kind of like deja vu when I I heard you saying that, talking about the school building up there because the same thing was said about our community center over here. It used to be the, you know, the Center Elementary School. Of course, the county wanted to tear the whole building down. Oh, we'll save the facade, they said. But it was the same thing. Oh, it's unsafe, it's dark, it's dingy, it's all these terrible things. And but the school up there on Edmiston Road that we know, you know, I think of as the Greenbelt High School and the junior high and now the, you know, middle school. That's built the same way as this building right here. They were both built at the same time. So this idea that you're going to listen to somebody who's telling you that the building is no good or you're going to give us that same story again about how the building is no good. You know, come over and take a look at our community center. And it costs way less to fix a school than it does to tear it down and build a new one. I mean, especially when you have a building that is like pre World War II. Because pre World War II was some of the best construction that you see out there. Yeah, they did some stuff, you know, they had asbestos and stuff like that. But all that can be remediated and taken care of. You know, the basic buildings that they built back then, I mean, they have fallout shelter signs on them. I don't think any of the new buildings that you have have fallout shelters in the bottom. So, you know, this idea that you're going to close it permanently, and I assume that means you want to tear it down. I hope that's not the case because because that building has a lot of life. It should have a lot of life left in it. And, I mean, there's so much need in the county for more space. Why would you want not want to use that school? That's what I. That's what I...
recognition programs that we have for both outstanding students and also for, for projects that are not, that don't qualify for funding from the schools directly. I think that's the purpose of the funds.
Yes, absolutely. And I do mention those. I know that Councilwoman Ingrid Watson has some grant money that exists. And so I always make sure that schools know that that's available. And I think they would love to just know and take advantage of that. So, and what I'll do is I'll likely let the, I think I really want to think about our schools that are mostly due to in Greenbelt. And so our community schools constantly, especially Spring Hill Lake, you know, need resources. Students who, when I went there, they really rely on, you know, the clothes for the winter, or they grow out of clothes really quickly. And that additional funding really supports with a lot of other things that the schools don't always have to support families and the needs of the students. So I'm always happy to share that.
Yeah, we're very proud and very much willing to continue to fund those programs to sort of fill, fill in some of the gaps that might exist. And we appreciate the fact that you do attend the presentation ceremonies. Your presence is very, very important. Do want to circle back. I kind of halfway asked this question. I didn't ask it very well. But it's my understanding that, I guess it was last week, our state Senator Alonzo Washington and others signed off on some legislation that is, that has been put into place, creating an Office of Integrity and Compliance for the Prince George's County Public Schools. And there's a director, I believe, who's been named. Have you had any communication with him? And can you talk a little bit about steps that are being taken to approve, improve accountability in the schools in general?
Yeah. No, thank you for that question. So, yeah, and just to recap, Alonzo, well, during the 2023 General Assembly, there was the bill that moved through the House and the Senate that specified this new Office of Integrity and Compliance, which is an independent office from PGTPS. The Integrity and Compliance Officer serves as an independent employee within PGTPS. And the office may employ staff in order to execute the duties of the office. Just for clarity's sake, the office is charged with assisting the county council and the PGTPS school system by providing independent evaluations and recommendations regarding opportunities to preserve PGTPS's reputation and improve the effectiveness, the productivity, or efficiencies of school system programs that can include policies, practices, or operations. They're also tasked with ensuring public accountability by preventing investigating or reporting instances of fraud, of waste, and of abuse of school system property or funds, as well as examining, evaluating, and reporting on the adequacy and effectiveness of the systems of internal controls and their related accounting, financial technology, operational policies. And finally, reporting non-compliance with and proposing ways to improve employee compliance with applicable law, policy, and ethical standards. And in addition to that, they're also authorized to conduct administrative investigations, budgetary analyses, and financial management or performance audits, and similar reviews. They provide management advisories, and they can utilize the assistance from any other government agency or private party to complete a project initiated by the office. And one of the things that I think really is important, and that is also important for you all to know, is that they're tasked with coordinating with the school system and taking into consideration requests from specified members of the community. And they're also required to develop a written work plan and establish periodic goals and priorities for the office based on an assessment of relative risks. So all of that language, as I mentioned, was approved by the General Assembly in 2023. And then the law went into effect as of June 1, 2024. And since then, Mr. Frank Turner was hired. He was brought on as the Office of Integrity and Compliance Officer. He's been working closely with the board on developing a clear work plan, as well as with the school system. And I do want to mention that there have been discussions among certain members of the board to strengthen the language in the bill that is currently law, to get more specific on timelines, reporting requirements, along with specific language around which offices within PGTPS the Office of Integrity and Compliance will coordinate with. But those actions have not, those efforts haven't happened yet. So as of now, Mr. Turner is charged by law with moving forward with what the office is tasked with doing in partnership with the board. So we're waiting to get that work plan and for updates on what that looks like. Granted that there, as I mentioned, there may be some changes to the law eventually, but that likely won't happen this year. That'll take time. So for now, Mr. Turner is our officer for the Office of Integrity and Compliance.
It's good to know. It sounds like a step in the right direction. I do want to ask a question. So there was Mr. Murray. And he recently resigned. Apparently, he had had a position in another jurisdiction. So I was just wondering, what's the next step in that process in filling that position? Is it, it's an elective position? Is it going to be a special election? Or is the situation or the actual controversy going to be explored in any greater detail?
Yeah, so there was actually a release, I believe, there was a legal, this came from, I'm not sure if it was the Maryland State Board of Education. It may have come from the Maryland State Board of Education there, Officer General Counsel, that released that the, any further legal action against Mr. Murray could likely not proceed simply because he's no longer a school board member. So he's not bound to any of the responsibilities of being in the district, et cetera, et cetera, that exist around the kind of the electoral standards. As far as moving forward with, I'm sorry, I think I might have forgotten the second part of the question.
So when is that position going to be filled? And is there going to be an election, a special election or something?
So, you know, I mean, the election, the election was happening. And I think there were a few people who were running for the District One seat that made it past the primaries. And so during the upcoming election that's going to be happening, there are two candidates that are running for the District One seat that will be elected to fill that. And so we're just waiting for the election in November to see who that candidate will be, who will be kind of sworn in in December.
Right, that's helpful, that's helpful. And this issue of how this happened with a school board member living in another jurisdiction, I'm not sure exactly what the situation was. But is that something that these discussions at the school board is having about tightening up some of the criteria with the Integrity and Compliance Board? Is this an issue that's being broached?
Yes. So we're both talking about attendance, which is something that we're definitely going to be more clear on this year of board members, which is possibly where one of those gaps existed was not showing up. That would have been caught sooner if we had better enforcement policies for attendance. And then I think also, you know, there's obviously a law that passed. I think it's HB 1079, which really put into state law requirements around standards. So those things will be enforced if a board member violates that in any way while they're in office. But I think our attendance policies and processes are going to be ramped up this year to ensure that we don't have anything like that kind of fall in between the cracks.
Thank you. That's good to know. There's a couple of questions from the public. Any additional comments or questions from council?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how the new Office of Integrity and Compliance works with the board's Office of Fraud, Waste, and Abuse. Are those, do those divisions, are they going to be working together? Are they going to remain separate?
So right now, in the law, they're separate. The, as I mentioned, the Office of Integrity and Compliance Officer is an independent person from the school board or from the PGTPS system. So I believe he's more with the county council. We just happen to pay for his salary and, as is written in the state law. So that is one of the things that certain board members would like to see changed in the law, is that really that full kind of funding piece also goes to the county council, since they actually hold the authority over Mr. Turner and his office. So right now, he is not associated with the school board, minus the fact that he is going to be leading many of these kind of audits of the school system.
Okay, so like right now, if any citizen or resident has a concern about fraud, waste, and abuse, we can report it to the Office of Fraud, Waste, and Abuse. Is that something that will continue? Or would we start reporting any kind of concerns we have to the new Office of Integrity and Compliance? Or is that more an external agency sort of working for the county and not something that residents would be involved with?
Well, so again, I mentioned that the community piece does exist where members of the community can submit concerns to them. But I think instead of you going through PGTPS, because he is an independent office, you would be going through the PGCPS, because he is an independent office, you'd be going through the county for any of those concerns. And so I think that the details of that would be ironed out. And I'm not sure if there's a website up for Mr. Turner's office, but there is that independence from the the school system. And so you wouldn't go through the same process that you would do with the internal office in PGCPS that already does audits of fraud and waste, and that will continue.
So that will continue. So the PGCPS office will continue. People will continue to be able to report concerns to PGCPS, but they can also report them to this new county office. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We've got a couple of
There is contact information for that. I Googled it. And there is contact information on on the web for a phone number and an email address. So.
Great.
Okay, and we can post that on our city webpage. Yes, Mr. Gilbert Strossler, Robert.
Jonathan, don't you have an internal audit department?
Yeah, we do. So there are a lot of people, there are some that feel that it is a redundancy. But I think a lot, yeah, I think I think legislators who were leading that bill wanted there to be independence, which is why this, there, there is that distinction that it isn't a school board or a school system involved auditing system. It is a county. So it's kind of that outside piece. And perhaps there was some need that as to why that bill existed. But there are people who do feel exactly what you're saying, that there's a redundancy here.
Yeah, that definitely is because when I applied for the Assistant Director of that position, the organization chart reported directly to the Director of Financial Operations. I'm going, that's ridiculous. There's no independence. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you get
Yeah, so that's like where they
Yeah, go ahead.
No, that's likely where that came from was concerns of the independence and just ensuring that there were checks and balances that weren't being monitored by someone who had authority over this particular person. And I think that's why that that piece of legislation.
You're not, you're not eliminating, you're not eliminating the internal audit department, are you?
No, that still is going to exist. So they're still going to be auditing and providing the board with updates on any of those audits that exist.
Do those reports also go to this independent person?
I think, believe those will be separate.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. As far as, so I think your question.
Yeah.
Will they coordinate? Will coordinate? And he will coordinate, yeah. With like, if there's, if he has an information request, or he wants to get information about something, and obviously, the audit department has that information, they are required right now through the state law to provide his office with any of the requested information that comes from any audits that they lead.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it being redundancies. So they should compare their plans, their annual plans.
Yeah, and I think we're just trying to get some of those details ironed out, because I think that's where the benefit of legislators working with the people who actually do the work helps to strengthen the legislation so that, because maybe you don't know all those details if you're just kind of like thinking it at a high level. But people who are actually in those offices understand how it works. And so that is some of the pieces that I mentioned board members want to include is kind of strengthening the language. It makes more sense for how our system actually operates.
So you get copies of audit reports for each of the the schools in in Greenbelt?
If there's anything that's submitted concerning a school in Greenbelt or any other area, yes, we receive all of the updates about what that issue was, when it happened, and then any resolution to that specific investigation.
I'm saying general audits of each school.
Oh, yeah. And then, yeah, we get all the time.
You've got a cycle, a three-year cycle of auditing every every school?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So we receive those reports continuously. Yeah.
Thank you, Robert. Let's see, I don't see any questions online. I've got one question here. Please, sir.
Brooklyn still. I've always thought it was a good thing when I, since I returned to Greenbelt, that among the advisory groups, advising council was ACE. I was a little disappointed over the years that it seemed primarily focused on a good thing, recognizing students and recognizing teachers. I have only incidental knowledge that there may be one other such municipal advisory group to its council. That's College Park. And I'm not even certain of that, but I think that I have read that. I was going to ask if there are others throughout municipalities in the county. And I've thought, rather than just focusing on Greenbelt students, that primary purpose, it would be better for ACE to assist and focus on Greenbelt students by maybe broadening its reach to other communities where there is no such group of parents and interested parties who come together to advise their local jurisdictions, councils, or whatever authority may exist, on how to improve the schools there. I'm just wondering, has ACE ever considered having a hosting a forum, maybe in Greenbelt, of interested parents and teachers from the 27 municipalities in the county, where there may not be such a forum for parents to come together and advocate for their youth? If not, I would hope that you might consider doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I think ACE, weren't you having some conversations with our peers, the other four cities, Berlins Heights and New Carrollton and College Park recently?
Yes, we were able to actually meet with the representative from College Park. We exchanged some ideas on how we can be more engaging, not just celebrate, like you were saying, our scholars, but also for our struggling students, our mental health needs, just basic supplies that are not covered by PGCPS. So we were able to reach out to them and have great conversations. We weren't able to reach out to a number of the schools. So we're going to continue to try and be engaged. And you're right, come together so that we can find more support and more ways that we can advocate in a lot broader spectrum.
Hey, I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for your service on the Advisory Committee on Education. We're currently recruiting members for ACE. There's, I believe, there's two openings, there's at least two.
No, there's plenty of openings for
Devil openings.
Our educational committee. There's four right now.
Right. So we actually, we need participants. And Mr. Briggs, if you know of Greenbelt, Greenbelters that reach out to you on different issues, please let them know that we are recruiting for our Advisory Committee on Education. We have some people with a lot of opinions about what should happen in the city, but they don't seem to fill out the paperwork and actually serve on any advisory committees. So.
I also want to add that it's available for all the Greenbelt residents, 18 and above. So we're looking to get those youngsters involved, too, that want to become civically engaged, especially in education, to come out. We're also trying to reach out to student representatives from each school to attend our meetings as well. So please share the word that we would like to have all voices represented and be engaged in their education.
Thank you very much.
If I
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I have a newsletter that goes out likely every two weeks or monthly. Would love if you just want to send a blurb over about it. And I also have a website up now for anyone who wants to just keep up to up to date on what's happening in District Two. So I'm always happy to publish any of those things on either of those. If you want to share that information to my PGCPS email.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. I just, since we're closing things out, before we ended, I wanted to say that even though transportation is absolutely horrendous right now for me personally, I adore Stop Finder. Just being able to know that there is a bus out there means so much to me, a lot more than just standing there for hours on end. So thank you for Stop Finder. Even though transportation isn't happening yet, I really appreciate it as a parent. And then I remembered my question from before. We have not yet touched on if we will be able to go into the DKFI building prior to it being, not turned over, but prior to it being transitioned to the Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. And in addition to that, I wonder if we could see a list of planned improvements prior to when the elementary school kids move in, because I know that they have about 100 more kids than DKFI, and there were some portions of the building, to my understanding, that were not usable. So if we're talking about using more space, I would really like to know what is being put in place, what will be done to keep those kids safe and and learning well every day.
Those are great specific questions.
Yeah, because I know that I'm going to, the Dora Kennedy Report on the facilities index. But are you referring to the Dora Kennedy Building or the Robert Goddard Building?
I'm referring to the current Dora Kennedy Building, the one in Greenbelt that our Spring Hill Lake students will be going to.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Briggs, you know, I really want to thank you for your service. And thank you for joining us tonight. Want to make you aware of a couple of things. On October 9, we are having our annual Walk to School Day. There'll be a contingent leaving from Beltway Plaza, I think it's seven in the morning, walking down to Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. There's also a group that'll be walking out to Greenbelt Elementary School. So you're welcome if you're not doing anything. On the ninth, you're welcome to come out and join us at one of those walks. We'll forward the information to you. We'll be glad to, will you be able to join us?
I just want to say, you might have gotten beaten to the punch, because I actually reached, got outreach from Hollywood Elementary in College Park. And so I will be walking that day. Happy to hopefully bump into you all as we're all walking together. But I will be at 7:30. I will be be with Hollywood and always happy to do things like that in the future.
Okay, okay. So we'll be happy to promote your town hall, which she said is coming up on October 2. At 7:00 PM. So if you send us the information, we can post it on the city website. And you mentioned your newsletter and website. So what's the best way to get in contact with you for for parents and for kids?
Yeah, I mean, those are all really good ways. Of course, you can always email me at Jonathan.Briggs@PGCBS.org. That also on my website, there is a direct contact. So you can just say, connect, go to the connect button, and then you can send me an email through that. And and then I have an office hours that's now set up on the website as well. So if you want to set up a meeting, whether it's 15 minutes, 30 minutes, or an hour, really, just really, we're likely more more likely be 30 minutes or 15 minutes. But if we wanted to have an hour meeting, I have my availability up in my calendar. So there are a number of ways that you can reach me and get in contact me, and then I'm always happy to have discussions, whether email or in person or virtually.
And you're a Greenbelt resident. So
Yes.
If you are ever looking for a place to meet, and you know, it's convenient, you know, if you contact our city manager, city administration, you could probably hold a meeting in our library or one of our facilities. Just let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. I really appreciate that. I'll definitely follow up.
Okay. And the website address or the newsletter, how do you subscribe to the newsletter?
The newsletter is a bit more complicated, because you actually have to have the the account that exists through PGCPS. I don't think it's SchoolMax, but the account that parents have, you have to go there to sign up for my newsletter. You would just go to the to my page on PGCPS, which is Jonathan Briggs, District Two. You'd find where all the board members are and go there, and you can sign up for the newsletter. Easier is my website. All you need to do is just type in JonathanBriggsDistrictTwo.com. Or I'm working on making sure that it comes up on Google. I still haven't found it, but you should likely be able to put in Jonathan Briggs or PGCPS District Two, and those, the website should come up in the search, too.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you for your service. We'll be looking for quite a bit of information, boundary changes, planned improvements. Just it's really helpful being able to sit and talk with you from time to time. So just appreciate the work session. Hopefully, we'll be able to talk with you towards the end of the school year. With in terms of visiting any of the schools or the PT, PTAs or PTOs, are you scheduled to to visit any of our school PTA or PTO meetings in October?
I normally get one-off invites. So if a PTA or PTO wants to invite me, I'm always happy to join the meeting. I am scheduled to be visiting with principals, as I mentioned, and there's, there are 17 schools. So that'll be over kind of about a month and a half timeframe, and that'll be happening very soon. But otherwise, PTAs, PTOs normally tend to reach out to me individually for an invite in either a presentation or they just want to talk.
Very good, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service, and we'll be seeing you soon.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you.